Welcome. It is Wednesday, October 15th. This is a regularly scheduled planning board meeting. We'll have another one next week that is not regularly scheduled. One item on next week's agenda. We have two items on tonight's agenda. Should be pretty quick. So I'm calling this meeting to order. Let's do the pledge of allegiance and I'd ask Dan to lead us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dan. All right, as I said, we have two items on the agenda today. I'd like to ask the board members to introduce themselves, beginning with Courtney on my left.
Hi, I'm Courtney Snellings.
I'm Lori Rice.
Amy Hybel, Harpswell.
Dan Hoback.
Christine Donovan Hall, Oars Island.
And I'm Margaret McIntyre, the town planner.
All right, very good. Okay, old business, none new business. The first item on our agenda.
We do have a quorum.
Yes, we do have a quorum, absolutely. Everybody will be voting.
Yep.
So I declare that. It's on the agenda. I take that declaration.
Thank you.
All right, first item is 251001J McIntarfer? Am I pronouncing that correct?
Recording in progress.
McIntarfer, good. And Tatiana Lera, Flycatcher LLC is their representative. This is map two, lot 64, 112 Harpswell Neck Road. This is consideration of an application for a new wharf in the Resource Protection District, which is where most of them always are. Let's see. What we have to do here tonight is we basically have two actions. We will have to find that standard, the standards in section 15 are met, and then we'll go through approval. But before we do that, I'd like to ask the planner if she has anything she'd like to add, and then we'll hear from the applicant. And the board can ask questions and we'll move on.
Nothing at this time.
Okay, super. Thank you.
Should I read the site walk?
Oh, that is correct. Yes, site walk, thank you. Dan looks at me questioningly and I'm like, what am I forgetting?
You can hold up little cards.
All right, thank you.
The site walk took place on October 6th at 3:00. Attendees were Margaret McIntyre, Amy Hybel, Courtney Snellings, Dan Hoback, Lori Rice, and Tony Simons, I think was the other one that was there, if I have him right. Property owners and the representatives from Flycatcher were not in attendance. Town members found the existing stairs that went down to the intertidal shore. The stairs showed signs of deterioration and looked unsafe to use. We were there at low tide and there was no evidence of eelgrass, but some batches of seagrass could be seen along the rocks. Intertidal area was very flat and would go down to mud at low tide. No concerns were noted.
Thank you for that. Great job. That's a really good idea to do that.
How many of you miss it? Everybody can understand what we saw there.
Yeah, yeah. It also lets people know we are doing our homework. All right, so we have representatives from Flycatcher here. Let's hear from them and then we'll move on. So you can go to the podium and state your, yep, state your name and...
Good evening, everyone. My name's Ellie Oberink, I'm from Flycatcher. I don't think I've met many of you before, so nice to meet you. I am here on behalf of Jay McIntarfer and Tatiana Lera for their property at 112 Harpswell Neck Road. As you mentioned, they are proposing a replacement of the set of stairs that exist on the property, a seasonal pier, seasonal ramp, and seasonal float that will be located within, let me flip to my project plans, Middle Bay. So the existing stairs will be replaced in kind. The total dimensions of that, as it does consist of a series of landings and stairs, will be four feet wide by a total of 48 feet long. And the pier that we are proposing will be four feet wide by 34 feet long, which will connect to a three-feet-wide by 38-foot-long seasonal ramp and a 10-foot-wide by 20-foot-long seasonal float. It does bottom out at low tide onto the mud flats, so we have proposed to install some float skids to prevent any impact to egress and egress and any impacts to the intertidal substrates and creatures there during periods of low tide. We have received approval from Army Corps of Engineers and DEP. We received DEP after we submitted this application, so it's not included in your packets, but I'd be happy to forward that along, as well as approval from the tribes and the State Historic Preservation Commission. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, thank you for that. Anybody have any questions of, it's Ellie, is that correct? And Ober?
Oberink.
Oberin, okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions? No, pretty straightforward. All right, thank you, Ms. Oberin.
You're welcome.
All right, so we have two things that we have to do here. We have to find that the sections 15.3.1 through 15.3.11.2 are met based on the findings of fact that our planner put together. So there are, she's given us pages of documentation, and I will accept a motion to find that the standards are met based on the findings of fact that will be incorporated into whoever wants to make the motion by reference. Anybody want to make the motion?
Go for it, Dan.
I move that the planning board finds that the standards in section 15.3.1 through 15.3.11.2 are met based on the findings of fact incorporated into this motion by reference that were prepared by the town planner.
Thank you. Dated 10/15/25, just to add a little bit of specificity, and I'll second that motion. Any discussion? No? All those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Now we move on to the second part of this process, and this is the approval of the application. I will move that the planning board finds that in light of these facts, with consideration given to the supporting documentation in the record, that the planning board reaches the following conclusions. The planning board finds that the applicants, Jay McIntarfer and Tatiana Lera, have met the standards of the town of Harpswell Shoreland zoning ordinance for the installation of a seasonal dock in the Resource Protection District. The planning board approves the application subject to the following conditions of approval. Number one, this approval is not final until such time as the notice of decision has been signed by the chair of the planning board. Number two, this approval is based on the application, including the drawings of the proposed dock prepared by Flycatcher LLC, and on all submissions and information provided by the applicant at final approval, whether referenced in any findings or conditions of approval. Three, the approval is dependent upon and limited to the proposal and plans contained in the application and supporting documents submitted and affirmed to by the applicant. Any variation from the plans, proposals, and supporting documents, except de minimis changes, is determined by the town planner that do not affect approval standards, is subject to the review and approval of the planning board prior to implementation. Four, the applicant shall comply with all state and federal rules and regulations that apply to the application. And five, the applicant shall use the Maine Department of Environmental Protection's best management practices for erosion and sedimentation control. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Was that Courtney that seconded?
Yes.
Yes. Is there anybody online? I was just thinking, if somebody is, we have to do a roll call.
Oh, yes, we have to do one either way, yeah.
I just thought of that.
Can we do it this way? I'd like to find that for, or I'd like to point out that for both votes, it was unanimous approval. Courtney Snellings, Lori, Dan, Amy, Christine, and Heather's not here. For both, both motions, unanimous approval. Okay, thank you. All right.
Thank you.
I'll prepare a notice of decision. The chair will sign it and have it notarized, and then we'll get it to you guys. And you'll be good. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and second item. I want to also just thank Margaret for doing such a good job of putting together the findings for us. She makes our job so much easier. All right, the second item is 251002, the Dennis Family Revocable Trust. 2003 owner, Ernest Daniel, who, Ernest Dennis, who is a representative, as well as others.
Jimmy, who is in attendance, is their applicant.
Okay, Jimmy Corbren?
Correct, yes.
Okay, Jimmy Corbren. Mr. Corbren, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, just to introduce this, this is a fairly simple one, really. This is the Dennis Family Revocable Trust that owns two lots on Long Island, map 57 lots 13 and 15. The lots were created as part of the 12-lot Long Island South subdivision, which was approved in 1976. The plan was amended in 1992 as the Fisher subdivision, creating three lots from lot 1 and 2. The trust, the Dennis Family Revocable Trust, owns lot 1A and 2B on the amended plan. Lot 1A is improved with a well and is otherwise vacant, and it contains 4.14 acres. Lot 2B is improved with a single-family dwelling and contains 4.14 acres. Both lots have ocean frontage on the west side of Long Island and front subdivision common area land to the east. The lots are zoned, Shoreland Residential, for 250 feet upland of the coastal wetland, and the remainder of the parcels is subject to interior zoning. I will ask the applicant's representative to give us a description of what the proposal is, rather than going through it. But part of the reason that we do this is just to be transparent and make sure that all of our dealings are open and available to anyone that's watching or that has an interest. So I'll ask Margaret if she has anything she'd like to add.
Let's hear his proposal, and then I do have something to add, but I don't know if he'll touch on it.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, let's hear what the proposal is first.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Jim Corbren with Teradyne Consultants. I'm here on behalf of the applicants, Ernest and Barbara Dennis of the Dennis something Revocable Trust. The Dennises are the owners of, and you described that well, Amy and Margaret, of this lot. It's a lot 2B of the Fisher Farm subdivision, and that's represented on our plan as the area between the green lines here, between Long Island Sound and what's called Salt Wharfs Cove on the right side of Long Island, or the east side of Long Island. There is no right side.
I like that.
You got me, right?
Yeah, sure.
This is currently, as described, a vacant lot except for a well that is for the abutting parcel that's owned by the Bouchers. The Dennises bought this vacant parcel last year and are friends with the neighboring camp, the Bouchers, and they wish to split the lot down the middle so that they can both share it and have a nice buffer between them and their neighbor. So being as it's part of an existing town-approved subdivision, we need your blessing for that. And this is the line proposed in yellow, highlighted. I've already set the pins at either end of that. And what we'll do is write a description for the parcel. This one won't need it. But just so we can make things nice and clear for everyone in the future, this land that's going to the Bouchers, I'll write a meets and bounds description that'll get conveyed to them by the Dennises. And then Bouchers will convey themselves another deed, that is their lot, basically their existing deed, the lot, was it 1A?
Yep.
Lot 1A of the abutting subdivision plus the strip of land here. And Margaret, I read through the terms, order, conditions. I have no issues with these. I think your suggestion was that I recorded, submit to you and record an affidavit once we've accomplished all these items.
I don't, I, no. The ordinance just says that either you put the conditions of approval on the plan or you record the notice of decision in addition to the subdivision plan.
Okay, I think I'm more comfortable recording the notice then. Because we'll accomplish all those items and then...
Sounds like you've accomplished most of them already.
Yeah, yeah.
So during my review of this application, it was discovered, which Jimmy already probably knew, but I did not, which is the abutters are part of two separate subdivisions, which makes it really confusing. So I reached out to MMA Legal to see if they could give us some advice as to whether or not the abutting, the Bouchers, whether or not they needed to come in front of us for a subdivision amendment as well. But it sounds, from the response I got, but because we are not changing any land within that approved subdivision, that doesn't need additional subdivision review and approval by the planning board. So we're not changing any of the boundaries within that land that was previously subdivided.
And it also does not leave a not-conforming lot in limbo with this subdivision, because that will be conveyed to an abutter. State subdivision law allows that as an exception within their law.
So it just got a little confusing, but it was really helpful.
It's a unique situation.
Yeah, it was very unique. And we don't do a lot of subdivisions in town, and a lot of ours predate subdivision law anyways. So it was a great learning experience, and that's what we learned. And so I tried to reflect that in the draft motions without making it too confusing.
Thank you for that. So does everybody understand that? Everybody get that? Okay.
Margaret, what else I'll do is, in that deed from Boucher to Boucher, I'll reference the conditions, the final approval that we'll record.
Cool.
I will admit, it took me a bit to get that lot 1A was already part of the Fisher subdivision. I think I'm correct about that.
Lot A is the Dennis lot? I don't have the plan in front of me.
Lot, yes, lot, maybe I said 2B, but parcel 1A is this lot right here. That's part of the Fisher subdivision.
Yes, and that's why it doesn't need to be changed. That's why that doesn't need to have separate subdivision amendment.
Yes, because lot, this is lot 2B for, which is a different subdivision.
Yes.
Up here.
Oh, okay. So this is lot that...
Oh, no, wait, 2B's down here. So this will get merged, right, with this.
Yes.
Yes.
And that needed, needs to be amended, but 1A was already part of the Fisher subdivision?
Lot, parcel, yes. This is part of, lot 1A was part of the Fisher subdivision.
Okay.
And so you had lot 1A and 2B.
And so only two? See, that's what I don't quite get, because it really looks to me like both subdivisions have lot line changes.
Lot, this subdivision did have an amendment to it. And that was done in the past, yes. And that's why there's the confusing. I think it's 2A, and we got 2B here.
Yep.
I wish I had brought those. I apologize.
I think I understand it, but I think, I think...
But anyway, this is, this is going to be, this is essentially the new lot 2B, right here.
Okay.
And that's what the plan is trying to demonstrate.
As long as we don't get kicked in the tail down the road.
But I think the important part is that we are not amending any of the lot lines within the subdivision to the north.
Correct.
None of those lines are changing within that land that was previously subdivided.
Do you have a written memo from MMA stating that?
I have an email from them, but I don't think that it's necessarily supposed to be for the public. It's more for our internal use.
Exactly. And that's, yeah, so I just wanted to make sure that goes in as part of the file. Okay. So let me, let me open it up for questions from board members. I'll have any questions.
I think it's pretty straightforward, because they're not adding, they're not developing, they're just splitting a lot. I think it's pretty, we've had these before, and they tend to be pretty straightforward.
Yep. Dan?
Okay, I think the first thing that we have to do is to find that the submission requirements...
I'm not there yet, because I do have questions. But I wanted to give you the opportunity to ask a question before I make. You have none, okay, super. All right, I have two questions that are not, they're not relevant to our approval or not, but they regard common docks. I wonder if there are any common docks on this property?
There is, there is remnants of a, I don't know what, I'm an uplander, so you have the dock that's in the water, and then you have your steps that lead to a platform. That platform is there on the land, and that's, that is right here. So we made the line, we intentionally made the line northerly, just northerly of that, by about six feet, so that that entire landing and dock would be on the Dennis's property.
See, what we, what we normally try to do if we can, when we have neighbors working with neighbors like this, is to create as few docks intruding into the shoreline as possible, because we have a huge proliferation of private docks. And so my question really was, do you know, or is it possible that there could be any common effort to, amongst the property owners who have managed to divide this property and have done so well, to limit themselves to one common dock?
So that is not a discussion we've had. It's not a consideration that I've made, but I will in the future, now that I know that that's a priority for, for this community. They both have their existing docks.
Okay.
And, you know, in front of their camps, they're probably 400 feet apart from each other. So I don't think that's a, would be desirous of these landowners at this time.
Okay, all right.
A shared dock.
Okay, super. I just wanted to ask.
I feel like this is a unique situation, because it's on an island.
Yes.
So unless there's a road that's connecting the two houses to the dock, and then they're going to have to drive to it, it's not really advantageous for them to share a dock.
Yeah, I didn't know if there was a road or not, but just, just wanted to point a reference question.
I've never been out there, because we have to do a site visit.
Yeah, we didn't.
It's pretty, it's thick. It's real thick, yeah.
The second question that I have is, we have seen this happen before, where people combined a lot, and we thought, oh, this is really great. I don't know, Courtney, you may remember this, Dan, you may remember. And then two years later, they go back and they split it again, because the land gets sold and somebody says, oh, I bought this, I can split this lot again. So my second question is, is there any way that we could know that this, this common, this, this recombination could be in perpetuity? Or do we run the risk of somebody buying the land and going, oh, I have an extra lot, and I could come back and amend the subdivision again and subdivide?
I, I think that would be difficult without putting something like a conservation easement over it. And again, not a discussion that I've had with the landowners.
Okay.
Yeah, I would find it, I find it less of a concern that that would happen, since now you're taking a piece of property and putting it into two different names. So you would have to get an agreement between the two property owners to put it back together again.
That's true.
Rather than a single person saying, I now have this one lot, I'd like to divide it up.
That's true, Dan.
Are you concerned that there would be now a third lot? That somehow it would be, things would be made smaller? Like to have more parcels?
Yeah.
It could, because don't you need, you only need a certain amount of land, depending on the size of the house. So if you cut it in half, you know, and then you...
But in subdivisions, I thought they needed more square footage.
They do, they need about 80,000.
80,000.
Isn't there something about four point, where did I read that, that there were four acres?
Yeah, there's 4.14.
I thought that was part of their subdivision agreement. Or am I making that up?
Oh, I don't know. Do they have a different minimum lot size in their subdivision?
I thought I read that.
No.
No.
In their stuff?
Well, I don't want to get us, I don't want to belabor this point, but it is a question I raised. And if, if for some reason this applicant was going to come back before us, I would, would ask for some discussion about, about doing that, but clearly, clearly it's not part of this, and I just wondered, so.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, now getting to Dan's point, are there any further questions? Okay, so we have four things that we need to do here. We need to find that the application is complete. Then we need to find that it meets state standards. Then we have to find that it meets local standards, and then we have to approve it. So those are the four things that we have to do here, and...
Really fast interrupt. I just want to point out, which I've done before. Mark, the previous town planner used to combine the state and local standards in a way that I always found confusing.
Yep.
So I just separated them out.
Yep.
But if you guys find his way a little more streamlined or easier, we can always go back to his way. But I think it's easier just to have state standards and then local standards.
Yeah, this is clearer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe it's more, it's way more redundant, but I don't think it matters.
But as long as we're not going through those standards one by, one after the other, and doing it by, according to your recommendations, it's still fairly straightforward.
Okay, so I'm, I'm assuming that everyone has read the chart from the town planner regarding the subdivision submission checklist. So I will accept a motion that the planning board finds the application complete, or that, finds the, yeah, the submission standards have been met.
I move that the planning board finds the submission requirements complete. Do I have to do reference to anything?
Yeah, it's, it's right here on page two, at the top of the, at the top of the page. I, I'm sorry, I should just go ahead. I don't want to be the one that does all the motions. I want to give everyone a chance.
No, I just like it if it's easy, and it doesn't sound like by reference to X, Y, and Z. So you take it away.
Okay. I move that the planning board finds that the application of the Dennis Family Revocable Trust meets the subdivision requirements of section 8.3.2 of the subdivision ordinance for a lot line amendment based on the application and supporting documentation in the record, and is therefore determined to be a complete application. That's a motion. Take a second.
I'll see where you are.
I'll do a second.
Okay. Lori, Lori, do we need to...
Roll call.
Roll call, okay. So Amy Hybel moved, sorry, Lori seconds. Now we'll unopen it for discussion. Okay, now we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Courtney Snellings, aye.
Lori Rice, aye.
Amy Hybel, aye.
Dan Hoback, aye.
Christine Donovan Hall, aye.
All right, that's unanimous. Now we move on to the state statutory review standards. I have taken a look at these. They, our planner recommends that they have all been met. So I will move that the planning board finds that the application of the Dennis Family Revocable Trust to dissolve lot 13, which is lot 1A of the Fisher subdivision, by merging it with abutting lots 5711 and 5715, meets the state statutory review standards based on the findings dated October 15th, 2025, agenda item 251002, which are incorporated into this motion by reference. Is there a second?
I'll second. Christine Donovan Hall, second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
Is there anyone on Zoom? Is there anyone on Zoom?
Yeah, if you're on Zoom and you want to participate in the discussion, would you let us know? Within the next five seconds? Okay, seeing no discussion, thank you, Dan. I think we're clear. Let's take a vote, all those in favor?
Courtney Snelling's aye.
Lori Rice aye.
Amy Hybel aye.
Dan Holbeck aye.
Christine Donovan Hall aye.
All right, thank you. And now we move to the local review standards. Dan, do you want to make a motion here?
Sure.
Anybody want to make a motion?
I move that the planning board finds that the application of the Dennis Family Revocable Trust to dissolve Lot 13, which is Lot 1A of the Fisher subdivision by merging it with a budding lots 57/11 and 57/15, meets the approval standards of section nine of the Harpswell subdivision ordinance based on the findings of fact which, prepared by the town planner dated October 15th, 2025, which are incorporated into this motion by reference.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? Nope, seems pretty straightforward, all right. Let's take a vote.
Courtney Snelling's aye.
Lori Rice aye.
Amy Hybel aye.
Dan Holbeck aye.
Christine Donovan Hall aye.
It's unanimous, thank you very much. Now we move on to our last procedural matter. And that is to find the application approvable conclusions of law. I'm going to try this out, Dan, you check my language, okay? Make sure that I'm on track here.
Okay.
I move that in light of these facts with consideration given to the supporting documentation in the record, that the planning board reaches the following conclusions, which are listed one through seven in the conclusions of law in the findings of fact, written by the planner dated October 15th, 2025, Agenda Item 251002. Planning board finds that the applicant, the Dennis Family Revocable Trust has met the standards of the Town of Harpswell subdivision ordinance. The planning board approves the application to amend the previously approved subdivision plan for the Fisher subdivision to dissolve Lot 13, which is Lot 1A of the Fisher subdivision, by merging it with a budding lots 5711 and 5715, subject to the following conditions of approval, items one through seven in the findings. Does that work, Dan? In the conclusions of law?
Uh, I would actually prefer with the conclusions of law that we read.
Okay, all right. Oh, I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
It's nice.
All right, this approval, the first item, this approval is not final until such time as the final plan has been signed by the planning board?
Wait, will you say into the microphone?
Yes.
Yeah.
Are we, we interrupting our?
No, yeah.
No, I apologize for interrupting, Amy. I, I, I wanted to make one change to the plan if possible. You used the word dissolve for the parcel.
Yep.
And, or Daniel, and I like that. Right now, on note one, the note says the purpose of the plan is to amend parcel 1A of the Fisher Farm subdivision such that it gets split between those two lots. Instead of amend, I would like to say dissolved. I think that would much better demonstrate the purpose of this whole amendment.
What I'm hearing is you want to change the wording on the document?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
On.
Or on the plan itself?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, that's what is in the findings that we're reading right now. It's not to amend, it's to dissolve, so that would be in accordance with what we're reading right now.
Excellent, okay.
It's consistent with the conclusions.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
And it's all just about trying to figure out what's going on here.
I think.
Ten years, what, what did we actually?
Right, the plan says dissolve, that lot's gone, so no question, I think.
Okay, okay, what we're doing it right now, just to make sure everybody's on the same page is, I am reading my motion, it hasn't been seconded yet. And we're going through the, the specific items of approval. The first item being that this approval is not final until such time as the final plan has been signed by the planning board. Item two, this approval is based on the amended subdivision plan of the Fisher subdivision prepared by Terradine Consultants LLC dated September 17th, 2025 and on all submissions and information provided by the applicant at final approval, whether referenced in any findings or conditions of approval. Item three, this approval is dependent upon and limited to the proposal and plan contained in the application and supporting documents submitted and affirmed to by the applicant. Any variation from the plan, proposals and supporting documents except de minimis changes as determined by the town planner that do not affect approval standards is subject to the review and approval of the planning board prior to implementation. Item four, if a principal structure is built within the area amended by this approval, will, if a principal structure is, is built.
There's an extra is in there.
Pardon me?
There's an extra is, is built.
If is built within the area amended by this approval.
It.
It's will be constructed with the lowest floor, including the basement at least one foot above the 100-year flood elevation. Item five, no land may be sold or conveyed, which was subject to this approval, until permanent markers, as defined in the Harpswell Definitions Addendum, are set at all corners of the lot, sold or conveyed. Item six, a deed duly recorded in the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds will be provided to the code enforcement office by the applicant within 90 days of the date of this approval, demonstrating that the 1.9 acre parcel, acre remainder of Lot 13 was merged with Lot 11 on Tax Map 57, otherwise known as Lot 2A of the Roger Jake subdivision. Item seven, the applicant shall, within 90 days of the planning board approval, submit the signed subdivision plan to the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds. The plan shall either contain all the conditions of approval or the applicant shall record a separate document that contains all the conditions of approval under the same terms and provisions of those applying the plan. Failure by the applicant to record the subdivision plan and all conditions of approval shall void the planning board's approval, subdivision ordinance, section 8.10. That's the motion, is there a second to the motion?
Second it.
Courtney Snelling's second, we'll take a roll call. Any discussion? Okay.
The only thing I wondered about was for number four, should it say it must be constructed with the lowest floor, including the basement, at least?
I think it's, it came straight out of the state law. There's no way that anything on this lot is going to be, other than a wharf, is going to be constructed in the flood zone because the flood zone is right at the edge, within the 75-foot setback. But in the state law, it says they have to address flood area, so, yeah.
Yeah, I wondered about the will be versus the must.
Sure.
That was just my, just my question on that. That's all.
Change it to must?
I would have put must, but if we're talking about it comes out of the state law, then I guess we leave it alone.
Well, it's, I care. I would like to think I put exactly the same.
Yeah, the impact is the same.
Yeah, let's change it to must, it's clearer.
If it's changed to must, do we need to re, reword that?
We've already done some, we already did some rewording with the is.
Can, can we?
I don't know.
Courtney, you think it should be must, Lori? I just want to take a, make sure.
It reads clearer, but also, you know, a lot of these languages get a little confusing to the general public. If it doesn't really change the meaning, I think it's a moot point.
Okay, I can go either way?
I would leave it the way it is.
Okay, Christine?
I don't like must because it means you have to do something. I, I like the will be, there's a little more.
I think you do have to do something, though. I mean, that does follow the law, but.
Yeah.
I'm not interested in dying on this hill.
Well, thank you for noticing that, I appreciate that.
She's an English teacher.
Yeah, I know, she is, that's true.
I can't help myself.
I think the trick is next time to, to suggest the amendment before it gets read.
That is true, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I knew there was an issue there. But I didn't know when to, I wasn't sure when to bring it up. Usually we have the discussion after.
Yeah.
So I, I really didn't know when to do it.
Okay.
Apparently I always choose the wrong time.
No, hey, no apologies, this is, this is a, a no screw-up zone here. No one screws up.
No dying on the hill?
No dying on the hill. This is a.
I hope not.
We're, we're all doing the best we can. Now, we have a motion on the table, we have a second, and now we're voting.
Okay.
Okay, so Ms. Snelling?
Well, yeah. Courtney Snelling's aye. Lori Rice aye.
Amy Hybel aye.
Dan Holbeck aye.
Christine Donovan Hall aye.
All right, thank you very much, I think you're good to go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you all.
I have a question for you before you go.
Yes.
So he pointed out before the meeting started that it's a little unusual to have this many conditions of approval on a plan?
Yes, I think some of it is redundant.
Definitely.
For. Right, so the approval is not final until such time the final plan has been signed by the planning board. If the, that's a note that is suggested to be on the plan, the plan itself will have your signatures on.
Yeah.
Yes.
Is, the approval is based on the amended subdivision plan of the Fisher subdivision prepared by Terradine Consultants. Again, that is the plan.
You put it on the plan and then they're signing the plan?
Yeah, the plan, the plan's the instrument. I, I don't, I think that just kind of duplicates that on that one.
So we can handle this under de minimis change?
Yeah. No, I just wanted to hear his feedback.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, no, this, sorry.
I know, I wanted to hear the feedback.
Yeah.
Okay.
We don't do this very often and.
I could, we could save it for later, too, if you want.
Yeah, well, you know, the fact that it's, I, I would have less prob, I would have more problems if it were not redundant and that there were differences.
Yeah.
But the fact that, that the language is the same.
Redundancy is good, I agree. That's a, a, a big thing for us surveyors. Also simplicity is, is best, too. So I think, you know, oftentimes, when I am writing conditions of approval, there are usually one or two from a town that are, are just always mandatory on a plan. And then there'll maybe several others that are very specific to the project. A couple of these are specific to the project, that's fine. I would, if you're asking my suggestion, I would just try to simplify it a bit, yeah.
Yeah, cool. I have one other question. Do you have a, since you don't usually work in Harpswell and you work in other towns, do you have a favorite subdivision ordinance?
Oh, Massachusetts? It's the Wild West domain, really, when it comes to it. It's going to be different everywhere, I apologize.
Yeah, it's all right, I just like to look at other ordinances. So I don't know if you have a favorite.
Yeah, no, I, I think the whole state subdivision law needs a revamp. And I don't like, this is, again, off topic.
Yeah.
I don't like where things are going with the new laws that have been enacted about upping units, allowing for ADUs.
Speaking to the choir, baby.
I get, I'm, I'm for the, the movement, you know, we need more housing, we need more affordable housing. This is just going to create, not enough thought has been given to it.
Yep.
And that's why I mentioned Massachusetts. They, I think they have a better overall subdivision law that.
Yeah.
I hope we can apply to the state here at some point, but I haven't found the time to write that yet myself, so.
It's a law of.
Or maybe we can merge back with Massachusetts.
I don't know. I worked down there for five years, I'm from away now.
Well, thank you very much.
Well, thanks for your time, I really appreciate that.
Thank you, yeah, it was great to talk, thanks.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, so now we have consideration of minutes from the September 17th meeting. Did I read those? I don't remember reading those.
Yes, you did.
Did I?
You mentioned you did.
Yeah, okay, okay, good. Anybody, anybody have any, any comments on the September 17th meeting?
No.
Okay.
I was pretty impressed with how thorough they were.
Good, thank you.
That was, those were not, those were not easy minutes to do and you did a very good job with them.
Thanks, guys.
All right, anybody want to move to approve the minutes?
I would like to move to approve the minutes as long as I don't have to have by reference to anything.
To September 17th minutes.
Yes, the September 17th minutes.
You will do it, not, not must. Never mind.
She will be doing it.
Yeah, okay. So you've made the motion?
I did, that was the motion.
I will second your motion.
Well, good.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, thank you.
Somebody's still online. Do the roll call thing again?
Yep.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, Steve is still there.
Courtney Snelling's aye. Lori Rice aye.
Amy Hybel aye.
Dan Holbeck aye.
Christine Donovan Hall aye.
All right, good. Other business consideration of proposed planning board bylaw amendments.
This can wait if you guys, I just thought it was a short meeting, so maybe it would be a good time to, to talk about it. We can wait till another meeting if you guys want to.
I left that at home because it was, it was for the 22nd, so. I can look on with Lori.
Yeah.
Did anybody read the bylaw amendments?
I went through it.
Yeah, I went through them too, but I just left them at home.
They're in the front pocket.
Oh, I didn't know they were even there.
Check the front pocket, oh, yeah, they're, they're there.
They're right there.
Oh.
All right, let's try.
I thought, well, Amy, I thought if I put them in the back, then you wouldn't notice them. But in the front and you didn't know.
I did notice them, but I just went right by them, I noticed, something's written in red here.
Did you email them as well?
I can't remember.
I don't think so.
I don't think I did. It sounds like you did.
Oh, I see what you did. I see what you did, yes, yes, yes.
Cool.
Thank you.
Dan didn't have a chance to review them, so we can.
Okay, thank you.
Wait on it, but if you guys want to email me any, anything that you have, I, yeah.
Thank you, I see what you've done and I.
I solicited advice from Mark and Terry, so hopefully.
Now, I was working on.
They haven't been amended since 2002.
So we're just looking at what's in red, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, okay.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you.
I was working on these with Howard.
Yeah.
And it was, it, he wanted to make a ton of changes. And it just got to be too much. But let's put this on the agenda for the next meeting.
Cool.
That'll be a short meeting, too.
Next week?
The one next week?
Yeah.
I think it's on, isn't that, isn't it on that agenda?
I can't remember.
I thought it was.
I think, can't remember anything this week.
Yeah.
Under old business, anyway, okay.
I have some other things to, short things to talk about, well, let's, let's hear Mary Ann's first.
Yes.
Hello.
Hello. Good evening. I figured I would get an audience while I had it. I don't know if you've seen the signs around town, but we're, the Water Witches and the Waterwise program is having a program on Saturday at the Schiller Center.
Would you identify yourself?
Certainly, I'm Mary Ann Nate.
Thank you. Thank you.
On the Conservation Commission.
You're probably going to put your microphone closer to your lip.
I don't think so, I think I hear myself echoing back.
There you go.
And I should, I should know better, Dan, I'm sorry, but I just thought I would take the opportunity to just bring it up, in case you didn't know about it, that it is going to be on shoreline erosion, and also using trees and plants to help with erosion and keeping water on your property. So it's going to be at the Schiller Center from 10 to 1:00, and Jamie Hark will be giving the presentation about what to know and what to think about when you're having to do massive work on your shoreline, and whether or not you're having erosion, and then we're going to have a question and answer period with an arborist in town who has nice experiences to discuss, so, and we're going to have refreshments. So, would love to see you there, but I just thought I'd bring it up.
It's beautiful, Natalie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Beautiful.
So as you know, comp plans on the ballot for the November 4 vote, there was a public hearing last night at Harpswell Community School, and there were three members of the public in attendance, so it was a really quick meeting. You can watch it online if you're interested, but, yeah, no, no discussion about the comp plan from the public at all. It has been submitted to the state for a consistency review with the Growth Management Act. First, it has to be found complete, and then they look, they compare it to the rules and see if it's consistent. So we're in this public review period right now, and it, we had to submit it to MCOG, Midcoast Council of Governments, they provided us some feedback, which they also submitted to the state, so we have received that feedback. It's really kind of general language clarity, but nothing about the content, so that felt pretty good, but we'll see what, what the state has to say. Yeah.
Does that mean if things are unclear, that those will have to be fixed, or?
I don't know.
Huh.
I don't, I don't know. I don't know how much her, I don't know if her feedback gets, I mean, obviously, it's considered, but I don't know if it's a make or right thing, I don't know.
It's a little late to make changes now, is it not? Not possible.
So there's kind of two things that have to be done for us to have our comp plan, is one, we have to vote it in, or if we had a town council government, they would vote it in, and then it has to be found consistent by the state. So you could do it in either order, we're just doing both things, both steps at the same time. The state recommends that you do the consistency finding before you vote on it, towns can do it in either, any order they want. So if it's not found consistent, or it's found incomplete, then we will have to amend it and vote again in March.
We were under just ridiculous time constraints, most of which were, you know, sort of self-imposed, we just, it became, it just became a lot of different moving parts that had to be coordinated.
Sure.
It's not on the agenda, but one thing that I'd like to ask board members to do is think about your scheduling and when, because we're going to start getting into the holidays. I'd love to do another workshop that's more open-ended. The last workshop that we had was really a good, it was really a good one, just because we were, we didn't, we didn't have to worry about meeting an agenda or doing things in a certain way, we just talked, and it was really refreshing. I think, and we all came away from it feeling like we should do this again, because there's so many issues that we just don't have time, or this is not really a great forum in which to really sort of discuss administrative stuff, or ordinance things that, you know, just might come up willy-nilly. One of the things I would put on the agenda is how the planning board wants to be involved in, if the plan is adopted, the implementation. When the comp plan was begun and put forward, the planning board wasn't really consulted on, not in a formal way, on how they wanted to proceed, and I think it's going to be really important for us to at least weigh in a little bit, if we want to, on what we think are important issues, how we think things could proceed. One of the things that I thought was, in addition to the planner being heavily involved, codes enforcement also ought to be represented, because they're going to have to administer the zoning ordinance changes that we put forward, and they have a lot of information that I think could be really helpful. So, it's just where, I just wanted to raise that.
Should we look at our calendars now, while we're all together, and just see if there's, I know Heather's not here, but see any possibilities?
Yeah.
Is it worth doing that?
Let's do it.
Yeah.
All right, while you pull out your calendars, the thing that's on the agenda for next week is proposed ordinance amendments, so I've identified a couple ordinances that I think need to be updated. I reached out to the town attorneys to kind of craft some language, and they've gotten back to me with some feedback, so I'll put that in your packets for the meeting next week, we can talk about that in addition to the ordinance amendments.
Okay.
To the bylaw amendments. The last thing, Amy, I wanted to point out that the rulemaking public comment period has started for those state laws.
Yeah.
Apparently, they're not on the, on the website.
The rulemaking sessions aren't on the website?
No, there's like a public comment period, so there's like draft rulemaking, I think, that's been done, and then there's a public comment period that started. I was in a Zoom call today, and they mentioned that it's not on the, is it Housing Opportunity? I can't, I can't remember. It's not on their website, where you'd expect it to be, but apparently, the rulemaking, the drafts are available for public comment.
Have you ever gone on those websites? It's terrible. They look like they were written in 1992, when the internet was first. Seriously.
Yeah.
The state, if you try to look up like voter registration law and all that kind of stuff, I'm sure it's the same for the housing and stuff, as it relates to laws. It's like 15 clicks in, it's ridiculous.
And then a bunch of the clicks that you make lead to nowhere.
Yes. It's terrible.
Great. Well, you know, wow, someone could, could, well, that's not transparent.
No.
Okay, thank you for that.
And it does, you know, like, if you look at the headings, you're like, oh, it should be under this particular one, you click on it, it's like, no, it's over in this one that doesn't, you wouldn't even imagine it could possibly be, you know what I mean? It's very odd, if you're trying to click around there.
Oh, the town website is kind of in there, too.
Yeah.
Anyway, so were we going to look at our calendars, just for the heck of it, or?
I'm just not the fourth Tuesday in the month, I can't.
I'm just not available on Wednesdays, I mean, on Thursdays in the afternoon.
I was going to say, you're not available on Wednesdays.
I am, I know, Thursdays, Thursdays in the afternoon. Afternoon is usually better for me.
What time are we talking about doing? That's right, you're a working woman.
That's true.
Yeah, I am, too.
So are you.
Yeah.
Yep.
You know, we'll go, we'll go with the earliest you can go, and you've, we've got to be respectful.
Well, I still have vacation time, I have to use before the end of the year, so if we do this right, I can just take a vacation day and get other things done.
Yeah, but that's, yeah, but there's, there's no reason why, there's no reason why we can't do it and do an early evening meeting.
Four, 4:30 or four, or something like that, you know? That works for me.
4:30 can be done, because I can always get out a bit early, too.
Yeah, that's what I do.
That, nobody has an issue with that.
Okay.
I mean, are we looking in November? Christine, what?
I'm good at 4:30. Yeah, 4:30 is fine.
So what are we looking at?
I just can't do the fourth Tuesday at night, that's it.
Because I have the board meeting for where is the deadline for our department?
All right, does a certain day of the week work best for everybody?
Obviously, we're free-ish on Wednesdays.
Yeah.
To some extent.
Like, the first Wednesday is good for me.
Okay, want to do first Wednesday?
If it's November, I'm going to be in Las Vegas.
Oh.
Well, let's do the first, if we do the first Wednesday in December, that gives us time to put together things that we want to talk about, too.
Okay, okay. First Wednesday in December at 4:30.
Yeah, I don't have anything on here.
For workshop, at what time?
4:30.
Okay.
So that will be the third.
December 3, okay.
We're just going to meet here in the little conference room over here, or?
We may end up meeting in my office, because Conservation meets at that time.
Okay.
So depends on where they're going to be.
What?
Okay.
This, that did just remind me of something that I wanted to have on our discussion list, but I didn't write it down. We did have a, the first Wednesday of this month, we had a staff review committee meeting to discuss Andrew Donnelly's proposed site plan amendments, so it went to staff review committee, because it was less than 1,000 square feet of amendments. It was a really interesting discussion, as it always is, and it, we ended up tabling it because, primarily because of the, the idea that it is, I don't know how much you guys remember, but there's a potentially significant vernal pool on the property, and until it gets surveyed, it has to be considered significant unless proven otherwise, and the survey period is only like April and May, and he didn't have it surveyed this spring, so we have to still consider it significant, so he's, he's, it kind of came out that he's a little bit maxed out in the clearing that he can do within this potentially significant vernal pool setback, so we're going to give him time to kind of change his plans a little bit, maybe amend them, come up with some good calculations about the clearing, and then he's going to come back, but that kind of really limits what he can add to that site at the moment, until that significant vernal pool gets identified. Just wanted to update you guys.
Is that the one on Mountain Road and?
Yeah, it's the pop-ups.
Yeah.
I remember him mentioning that back there.
Yeah.
I remember.
Spring would have been good, because it was white enough, you would have actually seen where it was.
Yeah, I know.
But.
He elected not to do it, though, so.
Yeah.
I just want to say the codes office has just bent over backwards to work on this project, and I think it's really important that we make sure that we document everything,